Good morning. Let's call Rankin County Board of Supervisors to order at this time on September 15, 9:00 a.m. sharp at this time. Mr. Craig Slay, would you have your implication for us, please?
Father, thank you again for the opportunity we have to come before you to invoke your blessing on our time together today. Father, I pray for these gentlemen as they make decisions on behalf of county board that you would grant them wisdom and discernment. Father, that you will help them to be at peace with decisions that they have to make. I pray, Father, that this community will continue to be blessed by your hand. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy, Father, and we know that those freedoms have been purchased with a very high price. Father, we pray for the families of those who have lost loved ones in the fight for our freedom. Father, we pray for those who are waiting for loved ones to return. I pray, Father, for their safe return in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Any public comments or recognition?
No public comments or recognition. We have old business minutes approval September 2, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? Hey, Craig, the only thing I have is just a clarification on the consent agreement. E?
Yes.
You recall that probably three board meetings back, they came and asked that they be allowed to substitute one entity for the other?
Correct.
On the development agreement, the board agreed to do that. There's no reason not to do that, so the board agreed to do it. And after that, their lender came back and said, "We want the whole agreement to be assigned to the new entity." So instead of just swapping the names out, they are assigning that document over. That's all this does.
Okay. Just clarification.
It's a follow-up. It's an additional step that's being required by their lender.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ms. Judy Fortenberry, task collector. Good morning.
Good morning. I have two ladies I want to send to that collector education class one in October. Need their registration fees.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The second one is something you've already approved, but I just want to get the lodging check for our program that we're going to this month, so it'll be on this budget year.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Judy. Bridget Herring, purchasing clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting approval of a copier contract for the JDC with Rico. It's replacing a copier that's about to expire or release.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Mr. Charles Parker, county consulting engineer.
My goodness.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
You better bring you some water. The rest of it's yours.
You're right. Well, sometimes I occasionally do something. I don't know.
Well, which means we've got a lot going on, Craig.
Yes, you are right. First item I have on the agenda is our old Highway 49 drainage improvements. This morning, I'm recommending approval of pay request number two to Thornton Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $77,000, $833.10, and requesting authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson. Questions?
Yes, since this is pay request number two, are we far enough along that we can go ahead and advertise the old Highway 43?
Not yet. No, sir. Not yet.
You answer that quick.
Yes, sir.
He knew it was coming.
But I'm going to get it done just as soon as we can, sir.
And I'm going to continue asking every time it comes up.
Yes, sir. I expect that.
Okay.
It's coming along real good down there.
Yeah, they are.
They haven't had anything to slow them up other than Incubus working on a busy road.
Yeah, you know, since you bring it up, we had one little odd thing come up on that in removing of a pipe. You know, we had some pipes that had to be removed, and the first one that we removed was sitting on Chris Oak members. I assume from years and years and years ago, that's what was done. So at some point, when a cover needed to go in, I don't know whether it was under MDOT at that time or it was after they had turned it over to the county, but the pipe was just laying right on those Chris Oak members.
Hmm.
And a little bit of a glitch there because when you have that kind of stuff, you can't just haul it over here and dump it somewhere. It's got to go to a special landfill. And I haven't checked whether it was under the other pipes or not, but anyway, just a little point of interest.
With all due respect, Mr. Parker, I'm tired of hearing about the labor pains. I'm ready to see the baby.
Yes, I understand.
Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item that I have on the agenda is our old Fannin Road reconstruction project. I'm recommending approval of pay request number 21 to Southern Rock LLC in the amount of $643,964.74, and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is our Ehrlich Road extension. I'm recommending approval of pay request number 12 in the amount of $143,943.96 to Joe McGee Construction Company Incorporated, and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Just one little comment on that particular project is it's winding down rapidly. I know Mr. Morrison is aware of that. You know, we just got some shoulder work and some grassing and so forth, so we will be finishing that project very shortly.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looks real good.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our Greenfield Ridge Part 1G. This morning, I'm recommending approval of the final plat, and we have a letter of credit in the amount of $22,410.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Whitlow Storm Drainage Improvements. I have two items under that. One, we have a summary change order, which was a total increase of $785.16. So first, I would recommend approval of that summary change order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Second item under the Whitlow Storm Drainage Improvements, I'm recommending approval of pay request number three, which is the final pay request to Parkman Wood Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $19,674.26, and authority to issue that check. That project is complete.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Bishop. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item I have on the agenda, and you may want to approve the next three, which they're just utility permits, you may want to approve them in one motion. I don't know.
It's okay, Mr. Attorney.
Okay. I make a motion to approve items F, G, and H.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got Mr. Craig Slay, Board Attorney.
Good morning.
First item under my section is a discussion of and the potential action to approve of what euphemistically Jared called a logging permit, but it's actually much more encompassing than that.
Right.
As you saw earlier, I sent you guys a copy of a permit that we use in the road department for individuals or companies that approach the county about permission to use our county roads as haul roads for heavy hauling equipment. A lot of it is logging, but there are other hauling operations that also fall under the permit requirement. We have taken the opportunity of sort of addressing some things that Mr. Dale has noticed over time about dealing with these situations. What we try to do is, as they approach the county about permission to haul whatever it is, whether it be timber or other things, we try to figure out what is the best route for them to keep damage off of the county roads as possible. So it may be a little bit longer or more circuitous route than just taking a specific straight line path in order to keep the heavier logs or the heavier equipment off of those roads. And so we try to do that on the front end, and so we have a permit that allows them to come to the county, tell what they're going to haul, give us some more information, and Mr. Dale then takes a look at the route that would be the most effective route to keep damage off the roads and permits them to use those routes. What we didn't have and what we have not had in our permit is a way to deal with a situation where someone chooses voluntarily to take another route and causes damage to one of our roads. Okay? And so this permit has some additional language that we wanted to make sure we got in front of you guys so you can be comfortable with it because you're going to be the first to hear about it if there are folks that don't like this language. All repairs of damage, if any caused to county roads by the applicant's hauling operations, will be subject to the repair by the applicant. We ask them to repair any of the damage that they caused to our roads. And what we try to do from a practical standpoint is if they use the roads that we tell them -- Ms. Dale, jump in here. If they use the roads they tell us that we want them to use and they cause damage, the county takes care of that. If they use roads that the county tells them we'd prefer them not to use, we have a mechanism that allows us to force them to repair that damage. So just from a practical standpoint, it's a way for us to sort of shepherd the traffic onto the kinds of roads that can handle it. That's what we're trying to do here. But we didn't have a way to force the issue of damage that was caused by somebody that chose of their own volition to go on to roads where we had already told them, "We don't want you going."
Well, I was out of contact this weekend, so you can tell me what the changes are?
Yes, sir. Primarily, it is to add language that says the applicant will make efforts, will make reasonable efforts to stay where we've asked him to stay. Okay? The roads that they're using, we're asking them to keep those in passable condition. You know, Jay, there are some roads out in the county where we know on the front end, the minute they get a truck filled with heavy equipment on it, it's going to degrade immediately. We know that going in, but there's no other option. So we ask the hauler, under our policy, to keep that road in a passable condition for local traffic. That's one. It's spelled out more clearly in the permit now. The second is that if they get off the roads that we want them to be on and they cause damage, we expect them to take care of the damage instead of the taxpayers. Okay? We also give them a 30-day period of time to get that done. After we put them on notice that there's damage and we want them to make the repairs, we give them 30 days to do that. There's some teeth in it. If they choose not to do it, the board has the option at that point to ask me or somebody to take them to court.
Now, Craig, a lot of times, I think we address, especially with the log haulers, whenever we do have rain or whatever, when they get out there and all of a sudden we have mud on the road. So that addresses that as far as...
Yes, sir.
We shouldn't give them 30 days to address that, though.
Not on that piece of it, right?
No, no, no. That's part of the passable condition.
Right.
We expect them to take care of that as they're going through their operations.
As they're going through.
That's correct.
Because we've had a lot more than, I guess, our share that have been calling, you know, to make sure that we do address that quickly. And Dale has been very good about making sure to get out there, but as soon as that happens, sometimes we don't find out about it even on the weekends.
Yes. So those are three things about the new policy, Jay, that are spelled out more clearly than the prior policy. Also, in the permit itself, we have an immediate revocation, the ability to immediately revoke the permit if they simply will not comply.
All right.
So those are the big things that we want to make sure we address with you guys so that as Dale implements the new policy, you guys may be hearing from those who hauled previously, who now see that they've got something new.
Well, one thing I want to make sure is not -- I don't use the word "logging," because I'm not singling out that at all. It needs to be listed more or less like a heavy load or heavy hauling.
That's right.
And another thing, let's just say, let's just say, bucket delivering a D8 or a large piece of equipment, and they got to come down. They don't have to come get a permit because they're coming down a little country road. And they're not going to notify us ahead of time.
Well, the pop...
This should apply to me to something where there's multiple hauling, like when the pipeline came in here, or maybe someone setting up a mining operation and they're going to haul, you know, 1,000 loads out, or a same way with logging, if it's just a -- you know, I know one instance, and you're familiar with it, down my way, they're hauling like, I think, 12 -- they're estimating 1,000 to 1,200 loads
Yes, sir.
-- coming out of a little small road, and I understand, and they understood at that particular time that any damage done to that, they would obviously be the one causing it.
That's right. Jared, I think, obviously, we can't cover every conceivable situation, but your one-time haul situations are, practically speaking, they're less likely to cause the kind of damage that would be of such a concern for us.
Right.
Repeated, multiple uses of the same track, the same area
Right.
-- is what we're trying to accommodate here.
Right.
And so it's going to naturally, it's going to cover the things that are repeated. So your dirt operations, your logging operations are going to be the types that are going to be subject to the permit form.
Well, and the other thing there, I think, though, in all fairness to them, is the particular route needs to be looked at because some of them will have some bad places because of where the garbage trucks run and stop twice a week at someone's driveway. Those will be some bad places that we can't blame them for, so we need to take that into strong consideration
Right.
Prior to.
But based on my conversation, Mr. Dale, jump in here if I misquote, but based on my conversations, if they stay on the roads that Dale tells them to stay on, we don't look to them to repair that damage. I would assume that if it's an extraordinary situation where they have cut the corner and they've managed to damage the shoulder
Right.
where if they had operated more carefully, they would not have damaged -- obviously, we want to retain the right, protect ourselves in that case, but if they stay where we tell them to stay, we don't look to them to come back and repair any damage. So it's really designed for the actors who would choose to take a route that Mr. Dale told them not to take.
Okay.
So we're just talking basically discussion right now.
Well, there is that we would like for you guys to go ahead and authorize us to implement this permit for use on all heavy hauling.
Okay. Dale, you feel good about all this, and I guess that anything else that we could have added or anything taken away that...
I think that this will also give us a little help with our dirt haulers.
Right.
They just, they go where they want to, and all we can do is, you know, we like them to go here and let them know.
Carte blanche, huh?
How will this impact existing mines?
Well, it's the same thing, Dave. As long, you know, if we can get them to haul where we want them to haul, and what that amounts to, dirt haulers, if the route gets a little longer, it's like the logger, they are doing it by the logging, if they want to, where are you going to send them because that's how they did the timber because, you know, a mile, it's just close.
Right.
Your dirt haulers will be the same way. They won't really, but they run just everywhere, and we have nothing. They don't have to get a permit or anything.
To answer your question, the permit that's in place now can stay in place. When that hauling operation ceases, they would be subject to the new permit.
So we can't retroactive this?
Well, you could. You can absolutely say that now. We would just simply require that our road department go back to the current holders and tell them, "You've got to get a permit like this now."
Well, if it's an issue we're currently having, why don't we do that?
Well, the dirt haulers are the only one we have an issue with the most. I mean, our haulers have been real -- we haven't had a lot of problems with them. Every once in a while, you know, people want to put them on state.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, the dirt pits.
We don't have anything but dirt.
What are you talking about then? You said the dirt haulers. What are they?
Well, they just haul. We don't get anything of a permit now.
Well, what he's saying is, can we -- do you feel comfortable just going back and retro this back to where they're coming out of pits, I think, you know, and go ahead and...
If we don't have a current process where we're expecting them to execute a permit then you can today say this will apply to dirt pit operations as well in Rankin County, and that you expect dirt pit operators to be subject to the same permit.
To follow the route.
I thought they got one anyway.
Yeah.
They have to get approval to do a pit. Is that it? That's all they have to do?
In that state, that's not, well, I guess, whatever county does, that's not anything to have a haul.
I'm sounding.
Well, we need one for sure.
Well, the thing that I was looking at, too, is some of these places come in from -- they're not Rankin County. They're from another state, own this property from somewhere else, and they come in and they do it, and then they leave. Those are the ones that I really think that we need to be, for sure, have some protection on. I mean, they come in, mine, log, whatever they do, and then they're gone. And so those, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, the people that, I guess, say Rankin County people that pay the taxes here, I don't know, I'm looking at them maybe a little differently than because of these that come in from out of town, out of state or somewhere else. That's where we really get bit because they're
Correct.
-- do it and leave it.
Well, we currently have a mechanism to be able to keep haul truck people hauling dirt out of mines, hold their feet to the fire now.
We can do it through our conditional use, Jared.
Yeah.
Absolutely. You can condition the haul route as a part of the conditional use permit.
I thought we did that at one time.
And I'm confident we have.
We have done that, I thought.
We have in the past. Yeah, what this would accommodate is a situation where, I'm just brainstorming here, if somebody's got a pit in Scott County and they need to get the dirt hinds, they're coming through Rankin County.
Yeah.
And you don't, you're not able to control that pit through conditional use because it's not your pit.
Right.
So it's a, there are situations where the haul permit applicable to a dirt mining operation would be appropriate.
Who is going to be the one to oversee and verify these people are doing what they're supposed to do?
It's the road department and the help of our constituents. I would assume that, Sheriff's not here to defend himself.
Yes.
I'm assuming our deputies can help us out with that as well.
Okay.
And does.
They do, you know, as long as we've got something in place.
Right.
They'll...
Right.
Well, I'm ready to do it.
Well, the situation, too, another thing to think about, this is going kind of fast because you sit here and think about different things. The owner of the dirt pit or the owner of the property that's doing the logging, they sub this out to someone else. They may rent the whole pit to someone else, so it, who's it going to fall on? It should...
It's on the hauler. We don't make it applicable to the landowner.
Okay, yeah.
And it's because the landowner at that point doesn't really have any control at that point over how it's leaving the property and where it's headed.
Yeah, they can ask them to go to a route, but I don't think that they have the teeth like we don't right now.
Technically, or not technically, but practically, Jared, they're landowners. They've been paying ad valorem tax on that property for however long they've owned the property and have contributed, as it were, to the road being there, you know, some small portion of the maintenance. So, you know, they've got an investment in that, whereas the hauler may not necessarily have it, especially if they're out of state. Who is, when you set in policies like this, one of the questions you can ask yourself is who's in the best position to be compliant? And it's clearly the hauler. Follow the route, stay on that route, and we understand that there are just simply costs associated with use of the road. If it tears up, the county will fix it.
Right. Eliminates problems or potential problems by staying in the route.
I don't really expect this to look a lot different than it has looked in the past. We just have simply better protections now with this in place.
Yeah, but the difference is, the difference is, the case that you're familiar with in District 1, they didn't have any choice, obviously, but to use this route. That's their only easement route. But they're not from here or anything, and no part of them are from here. They just own this track of land, and they knew they're going to destroy this or very likely damage from A to B. And, you know, in their case, I think they did the right thing, and we did the right thing the way it's set up with them because we know, even though this is a route that we've told them they could use, they said, "We know, whatever happens, probably we're going to be the one that created that." So, I mean, it runs a little different. If you go say, "As long as you give them the route and they tear it up, we're still going to fix it," this would have been an open book for them.
I think the key is going to be, as Mr. Dale has a chance to figure out what the route's going to be, Jared, if he goes out there and realizes, you know, after two loads that come out of here, this thing's going to look like trash, then he, at that point, can say, "You know what? We probably need to stop and think about what we're doing here." And then you fall back into the same situation where the permit simply is, cannot be drafted in such a way that it can, that it covers every conceivable situation. But I would expect Mr. Dale to be able to look at it and say, "They're going to tear this thing slam up," so the county doesn't really need to take responsibility for this situation. And we fall back to what you're describing.
Right.
And we ask them, in addition to getting the permit, we ask them to commit on the front end. They'll keep that road passable, and then when the operations are finished, they will repair the road. So it doesn't limit us. It simply allows for it to be, this is the baseline. If Mr. Dale says you can go on these roads and you do that, the county will repair the damage.
I don't know that I'm ready to vote for this because I keep getting different things to think about now that you've gotten some, I understand, more specifics other than what I've read.
Well, just think about, we'll vote in our next meeting.
Yeah, we have September 29.
Right.
We have a meeting.
I think...
Ask whatever questions you've got to ask between now and then.
Yeah. Well, I mean, sometimes these things are kind of speedy. Well, I mean, that's, sometimes these things are kind of speedy. You don't get to think some of it through...
Right.
Well enough, you realize some little things.
Well, that's the good thing about discussion of potential action, so we didn't hold our feet to the fire as far as real action. So if it's the mind of the board, then at this time, I guess, we're just taking a discussion. So we don't need to act on anything.
We'll make sure that it's back on the agenda for the 29th.
Do you want to table, do we need a motion to table it or just...
You can just pass it if you'd like because it's, it's either or today.
All right. Just pass it. Okay.
Okay.
Now we...
We'll make sure it's on the 29th.
Thank you, sir. Item B. Public hearing. There you go.
Item B is a public hearing on the Brian Berkeley conditional use request at 100 Belgrove Boulevard. And this is a District Two property. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. Mr. Berkeley is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a daycare center in an existing building at 100 Belgrove Boulevard. The building was previously used as a bank. This is a .70 acre parcel zoned P1. The total heating and cooled square footage of the building is 3,048. The State Department of Health determined the maximum capacity of children is 57. The building has been inspected for compliance by the State Department of Health and by the Reservoir Fire Department. If approved, the applicant will have to change several items to meet building codes and to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Brian Berkeley conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here. I just speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Most approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions? I've got, I guess, Renee, we've already checked, I guess, several things out there. And I know that, because Mr. Craig said it something, we've got some issues and stuff going on, and he's aware of all the issues.
He is.
Okay.
Just several things, ADA bathroom, the binne hood to the exterior, some smoke detectors. And then on the classrooms, the doors will have to open to the exterior or the building would have to be sprinkled.
Gotcha.
So...
Okay.
They are aware.
So this condition would be basically upon approval from the...
That they need to...
Yeah, they need to...
Y'all are, y'all are, basically what you're doing is you're allowing a conditional use within a zoning classification. You're just making a zoning. You're, you're not approving necessarily the use at this time because they've got hurdles that they've got to clear. So the use that you're approving is through the zoning context.
Gotcha.
All right, so there's plenty of other things that have to be met before they will get a certificate of occupancy.
Gotcha.
All right. One other issue, Mr. Wood has been out to look at this location and has raised a question about the parking lot that we need to look at as well. And so that's one other item that we're going to add to our list...
Okay.
...to deal with. And so I just wanted to make y'all aware of that.
Okay.
That's not a zoning issue. That's a, that's one of those conditions that we need to make sure we, we address on his behalf.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Craig. Ms. Laura Oster, County Administrator.
I only have one item for you this morning, and that's the approval of the claims docket. The amount I'm going to give you is a little bit less than what you see on your sheet. We had two checks and one of them will be voided. So I need approval on the amount of $8,488,964.3.
Most approve.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions?
Yeah, why do we have two months' worth?
It's just a lot of year-end things, a lot of purchases, plus on this one is the allocation to the fire departments, the tax levy allocation, that we're giving them the money, and just paying out some of the last things for year-end. We'll, we'll have another docket on the 29th cleaning up, so nothing, as much as we can stop, won't bleed over into next year's budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Additional business to be discussed.
Mr. President, I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay. Have a motion in, what's your, what's your...
I'd like to add, people had to commercial properties request to appeal the 100 mile an hour wind speed required by the Office of Community Development for the building to be constructed at 3021 Highway 80.